And good evening. You're welcome to the Murfreesboro City Scooter Board Meeting for tonight. This time I'll ask Dr. Brown if you'll lead us in our pledge followed by a moment of silence. We won't remember Carissa Dotson in our moment of silence due to a death in her family.
A pledge or allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you have the agenda before you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Communications, Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, we would like to thank the following individuals for their financial support of the Franklin Heights Student Activities, Kristen Hampton, Thomas and Kristen Chase, Leah and Brian Bartley, and Michael Holmes. And in addition, Outreach would like to thank United Way of Rutherford, Cannon Counties. They provided school supplies and backpacks for the students. This is the second year, I believe, they have done this, and it's really remarkable to see what they have collected for us. North Boulevard Church of Christ has provided school supplies that were distributed to teachers. The Rutherford County Farmers Co-op gave a $5,000 donation to the Backpack Food Program. Farm Credit Services gave a donation of a copy machine, table, and chairs. And the final communication item, we had visitors recently from China, and I'm going to let Ms. Smith tell you about that.
Thank you. Thank you. There's been a program in partnership with the Confucius Institute that I've told you about before, with Murfreesboro City Schools and the Confucius Institute at MTSU, and they are also partners with Rutherford County Schools. Three years ago, I had the opportunity, along with a number of other people involved with Murfreesboro City Schools and students, probably, there were probably 30 of us that went over to China and toured schools and got to really interact with some students from their elementary schools. So those students came over the year after that, and then another group went this past year that some faculty members, such as Siobhan Davis Lewis, went to attend. The McPhee spearheaded this. This year, the group came back again with many elementary students, and the group, I think, had 38 students and a few parents and a few teachers. They came over and Scales Elementary hosted them in the science lab at MTSU where some of their science fair winners showed their exhibits, and that was fantastic, and they were really impressed. And I remember that the head of the university was talking to a second grader about her project, and he was so amazed at her science fair project. And then they were very overwhelmed by Overall Creek. Overall Creek faculty invited them to see their campus, and they went through and had a few mini lessons at the school, and it was fantastic. They don't have any schools that are anywhere the size of Overall Creek. But we also had a really, really interesting discussion with the faculty members and the parents and the principal that were there, and I'm hoping that Mr. Anderson will take us through it sometime where it shows how much power is being utilized in each one of our school buildings by the minute. So that was fascinating, to see that end of the school business. So anyway, it was a wonderful exchange. Again, these were elementary school-age students, so for them to come over to this country and for us to have elementary school-age students to go back over to their country is just amazing, and I don't think there are many other partnerships in the country like this. I appreciate the schools partnering with.
Well, I appreciate you leading that very much.
No, don't be confused. That would be the MTSU.
Yes, you're right. And Liz McPhee, she contacted me.
And Liz McPhee is very much ahead of that.
Yes, exactly right. We will be receiving two teachers, we believe, this year from the Confucius Institute, so we'll tell you more about that at the next board meeting and maybe even have them here, but we're excited about that.
I would just like to thank Ms. Smith for her active involvement in that. I know it was exciting. I know it was hands-on and bringing that report back to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And those are your communications.
All right, let me ask one question to Ms. Smith. What did you mean by power by the minute?
I mean, it was. It was power by the minute. It's pretty amazing. Shut down, Mr. Anderson.
A little over a year ago, when the board approved for us to get a grant to do energy surveys and to watch our program grow, we can look at every school and tell how much energy they're using by the minute, how it equates to how many homes it would heat, and it equates to how much carbon monoxide we're putting up in the air. And so it's really impressive, and at the retreat is when I was planning to show you this program where you can compare the geothermal schools to the traditional four-pipe schools. And it's really a very impressive program. The state came and viewed it, and TBA came and looked at it, too. So it's really, it's really a neat program.
Well, thank you. I'll be anxious to see this. It'll be very interesting, I think. Okay, well, thank you.
And the comparison, it really was so fascinating, but to compare the older schools versus the geothermal schools that are the same size, it's very amazing, the difference in the power that's being utilized.
Okay. Thank you. Something to look forward to. All right. Consent items? Have approval of the minutes from the last, and any consent items we might have on the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Is second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. All right. Reports and information?
Yes, I'm going to call Greg Lyles to the podium, please. Next month, you will have a report on ESP, but we decided we split the reports, and so this month you'll be hearing about the Outreach team and what Greg and his team have been up to this summer. Music sounds great, Greg. We're very impressed.
I'm so glad this happens to someone other than me.
No matter how much you plan.
Well, while they're doing that, may I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just looking at this, and I just have to take a minute and say, we have such great sponsors and partners for these camps, and Mr. Lyles, I know, I've heard wonderful things about your work and your team's work. And I see this name here, Peggy Siniker, and of course, I remember when she was up here making reports, and it's wonderful that she would continue to, you know, support our camps.
I'll start talking, and then if they get that, we'll continue. Also, I want to say, as Ms. Phillips has indicated, our camps were only possible through partnerships with community partners who are very eager to step up to the plate when we call. We had faculty members, staff members, we had administrators involved throughout some of these camps this summer, and I followed ESP on Twitter, and they did a lot of magnificent camps this summer that Dr. Gilbert indicated that you'll hear about next month. But I want to highlight just a few of the ones that we had. Are you, it's not working? We, Club Marvel, of course, is a camp that we have in partnership with MTSU. We've done that particular program for the last four years, and the reason I included on my summer camp update was the fact that we had a couple of sessions that carried over until the summer after school was out. But generally, those sessions are held one Saturday a month during the school year on the MTSU campus, and various departments sponsor that program each month. For example, Concrete Management, Athletics, Math and Science Department, the list goes on. And then we had the Boys to Men Camp at Hobgood this summer. We had about 20 young men, and the boys kind of got short-changed because it fell on the week of Memorial Day, so we only had four days for the boys camp, but they were crammed packed with activities. And we ended that camp with a Cruze-In, I believe that's the correct name, is it, Mr. Anderson? Cruze-In for antique cars. It was a car show and a cookout that we ended the boys camp with. Girls Camp, Stones River Mall played a big part in both of those camps. It's, I mean, they did an awesome job with the boys and the girls. We spent one whole day, each group spent one whole day at Stones River Mall with various activities. Okay, I'll pause. Dr. Gilbert, I don't remember how many years we've partnered with MTSU for Camp Prism, but it's been several years. The students, grades four, five, and six, are involved with math, science, engineering, and technology activities. For a two-week period, we had 30 kids for each of the two weeks, so we served a total of 60 kids through Camp Prism. Franklin Heights had a number of summer camps going on, on-site there, and again, it was possible because of all of our community partners that were involved. And not only that, we had several other activities going on around town with some of our faith-based partners. St. Paul's Episcopal Church, New Vision Church were involved in camps at Franklin Heights. We had Key United Methodist Church were hosting about 60 kids for about six weeks at their site there, which involved a lot of our kids in the Bradley Patterson Park area. We had Camp Boost with Oliver Branch Church over Minerva Drive. It was a six-week academic program as well. So through our camps, we, our camps, we served about 400 kids over the summer. And you have the report in front of you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Lyles? Greg, it looks like a great activity for a lot of young people throughout the summer, and it's good to have something that we can do for those children.
And part of, Mr. Campbell, our Outreach team, they're on 11 months, so we utilize, we keep them busy the two weeks after school's out, so involved with the kids.
And most of these camps are a week in length, is that right?
Most of them. The Project Transformation was six months. Boost was, I'm sorry, six months, six weeks. Boost was six weeks, and I think the rest of them were a week long. Camp Prism, of course, was two weeks because you had 30 kids, 30 different kids each of the two weeks, so it was a two-week camp.
Any questions for Mr. Lyles or comments?
I do have one last comment.
Ms. Phillips?
I was able, I was, I was, I really appreciate the opportunity to visit the last day at the Jims camp, and I saw with my own eyes how much it meant to those young ladies and their moms that were there with them, too, and I got to wear my big hat for the tea party. So that was fun, and thank you so much.
We're just trying to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lyles, very much. Job well done.
Yes.
The rest of the reports and information, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Good evening, board. We have a lot of activities that happened over the summer to get the schools ready for the beginning of this year. In the past, I've given you a major maintenance and report on construction. We'll be starting that again since we're in the building mode again, so I just thought I'd start you off with this one and tell you that Bradley, the entire Bradley School was repainted on the inside. It took us pretty much the whole time, except for the last week of the summer, to do that. Northfield, we had a major catastrophic breakdown in the HVAC system there, and we had to contract out very quickly to get that back up online. It was up online the week right before school started, but it totally went out. Our concern with that is, if you look at the age of our schools, Northfield was first, then Black Fox, then Kason, and then Segal, and they're all exactly the same system. So this is the first one in the group, so concerned with that as we move forward. Hobgood, as you know, the new addition. All contracts are signed, and we're getting ready to begin that actual construction. The custodial service conversion to in-house, we did get around to all the schools. We did have issues because of the painting and because of the HVAC system being down that made us hustle and go back and redo some schools. The Erma Segal Classroom carpet, when we cleaned the carpet at Erma Segal, 12 of the classrooms, the old carpeting decided it wanted to be like a landscape rather than lay flat to the floor, so we had to replace that carpet there with tile. So that was 12 classrooms at that school that we redid, and as we move forward, we would like to build, we put $50,000 in the budget this year for carpet replacement, but there's still a lot of classrooms that are carpeted throughout the school system that we would like to replace and put tile in, so we'll be looking for that in future budget cycles. The Reeves Rogers Gym Floor, as you know, it was Discovery School before that, had a different logo. We totally sanded the floor down, put a new logo on that floor, and restriped it, and it absolutely looks gorgeous now. We did the same thing over at Discovery School because it was the pre-K, and so we redid that one and put their logo in the middle of the floor this summer and got that gym ready to go. The Scales Gymnasium, the ductwork in the gym, the ductwork started to peel and paint started to come off the top of all the duct for the HVAC system, so we totally redid that and repainted it, and we also built a brick firewall around the kiln in the art class for safety for the kids. Kason Lane had 31 thermal pane windows that we replaced. Thermal pane is the one that has the air gap between the two pieces of glass, and when the, when the seal breaks in that, the sections fail and they start to fog up, and so we replaced 31 of those. We've been doing that systematically around the district because, once again, those four schools I mentioned are all the same type of thermal pane windows that we're replacing. Discovery School, we had the electrical panel that we had the issue with towards the end of the year, so we went through and we had thermal scans done on every one of those, and they're all working, good working order. We had a safety team come in and inspect all those to make sure they're all good. And we also, this year, did something we haven't done since I've been here, and that's bleacher safety inspections. Our bleachers are, some of them are getting pretty old, some of the schools are pretty, you know, pretty tall bleachers at Segal and Kason Lane, and so we went and had a professional company come in and inspect all of those and do any kind of minor repairs on those that were needed. So we've started that, that system now as well for safety. The Energy Efficiency Schools Initiative, we've been talking about that for a while now. We were approved, the state approved $1.5 million loan for us to do new lighting at the schools listed, Kason, Black Fox, and Bradley. Gym lighting at John Pittard, Erma Segal, and HVAC retro-commissioning controls. We approached them to do, instead of putting in what's called a T8 light bulb, which is an energy-efficient bulb, fluorescent bulb, to put in LED lights. They are giving us additional money, so they're now giving us $2.1 million because it will cash flow and pay for itself the same as the other. So we're getting the newest technology in those schools, and that should be starting as soon as we can get through the whole process of all the bids and everything. We're bringing you all that information to get approved. The second phase of that at the bottom, if you remember, we came to originally what, $4.1 million or $4.2 million of improvements that included these other items, and we're going to be approaching the city to see if they will fund the difference because, again, those will cash flow and pay for themselves. So we'd be able to get upgrades and not, and not be out any additional monies except paying back the amount we would save in energy savings. So those are, those are all the improvements and things that were done by the maintenance department this summer. Just wanted to bring you up to speed on where we are on those.
Okay, question. Ms. Rehneer?
I think Ms. Smith was first, if it's.
We'll get everybody.
Right ahead.
I just turned my head.
All right. We have renovated the library in, at Bradley, so where is the new library?
This is the double library, Ms. Rehneer, that used to be the library. The new library is still the same, but there was a room there that was at one time the library, and so.
The small room on the back side?
It's, it's on the right as you go down the hallway. It was a large room, but we put it in, split it in half, and that's one of the reasons was we were delayed with getting the rooms finished was because we had to have a special order sink, but if you, it had an office in it, a small office where the library was, but it's now two classrooms. They needed that.
I just wanted to be sure we didn't lose libraries.
No.
And at Reeves Rogers, we're talking about the portable. Are we assuming the portable will have to be used as a classroom?
We prepared it this summer just in case because the school did grow some more. At this point, Dr. Gilbert, I don't believe she's intending to use it for a classroom at this time. It can be used for extra instructional purposes, but I don't think she's intending to put us.
I think what she's planning on doing with her, with her sixth grade is probably having two teachers in a large classroom. She prefers that over, over splitting and going to the portable. We've had discussions every day about that, so, and I support that.
And the last concern, are you going to give us a report about the custodial issue?
Yes, ma'am.
Later or here at this time?
I can do it now or I can do it at the end?
Let's go to Ms. Smith.
That's actually what I was asking for.
Okay.
All right. Do you want it now or you want it at the end of?
Now, fine.
As you know, we've switched over to doing our own custodial services. We have issues right now with getting enough staff to work the night shift. We are fully staffed at the full-time day custodian and the part-time day custodian and the nighttime lead custodian. We are short about 20 to 22 employees at night that we need to have full staffing. Basically, what we're having issues with is we're trying to interview as many people as apply, and we're not getting enough applicants to apply for those positions, so we are running short on the evening shifts. On the first page of what I gave you, it shows the staffing level. If you go to the very bottom where it says total staffing, and you can look down the column per school, I'll just go through. For example, Black Fox has one full-time during the day and four part-time employees, so they would have four at night. The chart is split up into the day shift and the night shift. If you see a buff color with no name in it, that means those are the positions we are trying to fill. We have two contract companies working with us to try to fill these spots, and they're having trouble getting people as well. So it's, it's a challenge for us now to get enough staff members at night. The next page shows the cleaning system we're using. We're using the highest-tech microfiber technology. It is the best that we can find today to use. It doesn't use a traditional mop bucket and mop except for spills. The microfiber is a system that is, it's just kind of like if you ever washed your car and used a microfiber to dry it, that's the kind of material it is, and it's, it's much more energy efficient, and that way we can take those clean with them and then put them in our washing machines at each school and clean, and clean those in the washing machine. The next page is four pictures of the van. We took an old school bus, an old special ed school bus, and we put the graphics on it to upgrade it. Instead of buying a van for $20,000, $25,000, we took the bus that we couldn't use for students anymore and spent about $4,000 on the graphics, and so we saved a lot of money by going that route. The bus has a lift on it so we can put the equipment on and move it around, and that would seem to be getting a lot of positive attention, kind of like the chow bus does as well. Kids thought it was the ice bus that came around. The next page is what the principals received that shows the staffing levels so they would know what we were paying and how many staff they would have at their school and what our total budget was. This document was also in your, in your board documents when we were going over the budget, but this is what the principals received in their handbook. The handbook, each principal received this custodial service handbook, which had all the contact information, the schedules, and the responsibilities for each one, and so we had that made up for them so they would, so they would know what to expect. And the last page is the schedule, salary schedule. You can see this salary schedule is about a dollar an hour higher for the entry-level employees, a part-time day custodian than what the previous contractor was paying. We put a night differential on of additional 50 cents for part-time, and the lead person an extra dollar over above that, so it's a dollar fifty more. Even with these, we're still having some issues. The city pays their custodian, part-time custodians, actually a dollar twenty-five more than what we're paying our part-time lead custodian, pay $11.76 an hour. So we're having issues getting people at the rate of pay which we're paying, but we're still trying. They're interviewing, interviewed again today. They have eight more people today than they had when we made this chart up that came in, in the buff areas, but we have, we have issues in getting staff.
All right, question. Ms. Rehneer?
Could, hopefully, someone is watching this meeting that perhaps knows of someone who might need a job. Could we also put these on the marquees perhaps at schools so that it's visible in the neighborhood where somebody might have, you know, it's easier to have some loyalty if you live in that general vicinity.
That's wonderful. I'd be happy to ask the principals to do that. That would help us.
They may or may not want to, but I just think it might be a good idea.
We put up banners at the bus garage when we're getting ready, when we're hiring bus drivers.
Right.
Fortunately, we have a surplus of three extra bus drivers this time.
Yay.
Which Davidson County's short 50 bus drivers, and we have a little surplus, so we're, knock on wood, we're very happy about that.
Ms. Phillips?
A couple of things. I think that's a great idea, Ms. Rehneer. Thank you. And, but I was also wondering if the Daily News Journal could help us out, a catchy, catchy little story about that.
There's Brian.
Because, you know, sometimes people don't have on, you know, our website or something like that, so a catchy little story might really help out someone else and help out Murfreesboro City Schools. Also, I was curious about who did the graphics? Who designed the graphics for the bus? They did a nice job.
It's the same company who did, who did the chow buses, and I'm sorry, I don't know.
Is that here in town?
Graphic effects, yeah, they're here in town.
They're here in town. And last but not least, we are having our finance compensation study, isn't that tomorrow morning?
Yes.
That meeting? So maybe.
Thursday morning.
I'm sorry, Thursday morning?
That's all right.
I misspoke myself. Getting ahead of myself. Don't scare her. Don't get worried. It's still on your calendar. But anyway, so maybe that information can help us, what we're studying there.
Other questions? I think it's a great idea to put an advertisement or a custodial meeting on the school sign. I think it's a great idea to put an advertisement or a custodial meeting on the school signs out front because it certainly could help in the long run.
Thank you.
What have we been doing so far to advertise?
The job's been posted on the website. I don't know of any additional things other than we are, we have the two companies helping us look and they are posting it. And we are, word of mouth is what we're trying to get because the best, usually the best people bring the best people.
What two companies? What do you mean by the two companies?
We're using temporary services to fill the gaps right now. We've used companies at the maintenance department for years to fill the gaps and so we have two companies right now we're working with.
But those two companies are never as reliable as our own employees would be.
Our goal is to have totally where we have all employees working directly for us. Now, yes, they do work for us, but, you know, it goes through a temporary agency, so you know they're not as reliable as we would like it to be as far as staffing goes.
Do we have any age requirement on our custodial staff?
Eighteen, I think would be the limit. I'll have to ask Mr. Ringstaff on that one.
We can't allow 16-year-olds to work.
We can?
Yes.
So if a 16-year-old in high school wanted a good, a part-time job, now, part-time is how many hours a day?
We figure part-time no greater than five and a half hours a day, so anywhere between three to five and a half.
Okay. So when we look at Black Fox, for example, that's the first one I see, okay? You've got one full-time, which is eight hours a day, then you've got four part-time positions which could be up to five hours a day per person.
Right.
Okay? And then is it up to that individual school principal to determine the hours that the part-time people were?
Well, what we try to do is make sure there's continuity between the morning and the afternoon, and we do like the principals to get involved with the start time and the end time, but we always want an overlap between the day and night so they can at least communicate and say, hey, we had this issue, or we need to report that or whatever.
Okay. On the, let me get back, just one second. On the microfiber technology stuff, okay? So this would mean that a custodian would not necessarily have a wet mop and a mop bucket?
Every school does have that, but they find it more convenient to use what, the microfiber, and they use those for if there's, someone has an accident of some form or fashion, then they bring those out.
Bring out the...
Mop bucket and mop.
Mop bucket and mop.
If there's a bigger mess, then you would want to clean up.
But they don't, they don't have them with them when they're cleaning throughout the building.
No, sir.
In other words, if I walk into your classroom and somebody has spilled milk or something during the day, then I get out the microfiber material and clean that up and that takes place of the wet mop and the mop bucket?
Unless it's too much, then yes, they would get the big mop, right.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, do you have a question, Ms. Rainier?
I did. Did any, do you know, did any of our original custodians who then went to GCA, have they stayed with us through this transition again? Do you know if we have any, like, I'm thinking way back at Northfield, Michael Jennings was our first custodian, he was there all the way and I, you know, I don't know if he did that transition and if he's still with us. I think he may have retired, but I'm just thinking of someone in that position.
I'm looking at the list and I see six that I'm aware of that were with us and then they went, did you say then they came back with us?
Came back. Well, that's good. I'm glad to hear that.
All the full-time day custodians were the choice of the principals, they're the ones that they chose.
Okay.
Okay.
A follow-up.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Phillips?
The ones that did come back, what about their, oh, their benefits, their retirement? How does that translate? Did they lose anything?
No, because it comes right back into the state retirement plan and it comes right back into our benefit structure and they receive the same benefits that our full-time teachers, everybody receives, it's all the same.
Okay.
I think we need, I'm sorry, Ms. Barrett?
So you said we're using a temp service right now to fill the gaps, the ones we can't, is that costing us more if we didn't have our own full-time to use that temp service?
It's about the same when you consider benefits involved. Now, if it's just straight hourly, yes, it's costing us more. If it's a full-time, it's actually costs us less.
Okay.
We use them at the shop for the maintenance yard crew and stuff and because of the benefit structure of the state retirement plan, et cetera, that's very expensive to the district and we end up actually paying less for those people than if they worked full-time for us.
Ms. King?
So, looking at this, we've got 24 open part-time night custodian positions. Because there's no name listed, does that mean that there's a temp employee in there right now?
Well, there's eight more that came, that were tonight, that showed up tonight from what's on this list, so...
Okay.
We would use a temp until we can get them hired.
So there is somebody in there doing the job?
Eight more slots are filled. We still, we're still not fully staffed.
But the positions that are not filled, are they filled with temporaries?
As many as we can get, we can only get eight additional tonight.
These are empty.
So nothing's getting done?
Well, if you look at that and just fill in eight more slots, one, two, three, four, five, six, some schools will have two, some schools will have three people. We really, our goal is to have three and four each night and that's what we're working towards.
But we still have some schools who are short on custodial staff.
Every school except for two is short somewhat at night. Now, the supervisor and assistant supervisor Pam and Eli have been coming in and working the night shift as well to make sure that it's covered to the best of their ability. But when you're short 20-plus people, it's hard to fill those gaps.
At what point in time did we start with the temporary services and hiring these people? What time in the summer did we start this?
Okay, in the summer, as you know, it's the major cleanup time. It's when you go in and strip the floors and everything. And we actually used bus drivers and bus assistants to do that. And we started out with 20-some of those and ended up ending with six at the end of that. It's hard work to do. Plus then they had to go back to their training to get ready for their buses to get to roll. When we started doing it, it was during the whole summer, they were interviewing all the time, it's just that we weren't getting the candidates.
Does the building level principal have the opportunity or do they take the responsibility? For example, a building that does not have the part-time people, can they interview and hire or has it got to be done through our central office and the temporaries?
We are more than happy for them to participate and help us track people and interview them if they want and recommend them to us, that's great. They still go through the regular interview process and going through all the background checks, and that takes time to go through that. You can see some of them are says waiting, we're waiting on background checks to come back or we're waiting on the physical abilities test, that's the PAT, the physical abilities test, make sure they can lift the right amount and can do things that we need to have done as a custodian.
Ms. Rainier?
Who does that, the physical abilities test? Do we do that?
No, it's contracted out through an agency that does it, and I don't remember the name of the company.
I wonder what we have to pay for that?
I think thirty-five dollars.
Thirty-five dollars a person? Okay, my other question is, now that we are doing this again, thinking back to when I was still teaching in the system, we receive supplies from, you know, heaven dropped them on us, I guess. How are those supplies being transferred to the schools and how is that being handled? Because I heard they didn't have toilet paper for a while, that they just got that, so...
We have some delivered directly to the schools and then we have the van that's there to move it around as we need it. They shouldn't run out if they let us know when they need it because we have that, we have the pony system and we have maintenance guys that'll help us if we need it.
So the school has to request somehow or...
Yes, there's a, the custodian would request to the supervisor what products they need to satisfy what they have.
The custodian does the request, not the principal?
The custodian does, right. We're working on building up to what's called a par stock, which means we keep X number of cases on the shelf at all times.
Right.
We've got to see the volume that goes through and it's only the second day of school, so we're really learning.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. King?
Ms. Phillips?
Can you tell me what the turnaround time is? So if there's someone selected for a custodian position, how long is it before they go through the physical, what was it called again?
PAT.
And the background check?
Background check and the physical abilities test and I count on Mr. Ringstaff again, it's usually two to three days to go through the whole process, is that right?
It's about a week, we actually do a TBI test in the next three days, get the three bad.
So we schedule the physical abilities test with them, they go through the TBI, background check, and it's two to three days to get that stuff done and then it takes a few days to get it back, like you said.
So one week is not, that's not, that's fine, that's not horrible, even though we need people in those positions.
Yeah.
I want to make sure those background checks are done thoroughly.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Phillips?
Just to clarify, I was a little confused when we were talking about that with Mr. King. The eight that we have since this chart was developed, are those temp or are those Murvisboro City School employees?
They are temps.
They are temps? Okay, okay.
Well, I guess it must be a problem somewhere along the line, but it's, and I don't know, things certainly change down through the years, all right? And I understand that. But it behooves me that why the principal can't interview somebody and do the background check themselves rather than having to go through an eight-day or seven-day process? I mean, you get references and you pick up the phone and you call, is that not legal anymore?
I think, I think the issue, and I may be wrong, but I think if you talk to the principals, they do not want the responsibility of having to do the custodial service in addition to their responsibilities.
We're paying some of those people pretty good salaries to do the manager of that building.
Yes, we are. You're exactly right, but those principals are looking at an 800 to 1,000 student school and they are very different students than they were 20 years ago. I totally agree with you.
Okay.
But I really, with the responsibilities that the state has put on us, the federal government has put on us and what we see with their children and parents, I do, there is no way they would have time to do that. And I'll meet with them tomorrow and ask them, but I have asked them, in fact, asked them this week about that.
Well, I guess where I'm coming from is just, it looks to me like in some schools, we're at a crisis time, but we don't have custodians. And we don't have people to pick up the trash or mop up the milk that spilled or clean the...
Restrooms.
The large restrooms and then they have an odor to them when you walk by them.
I'll be happy to discuss it with Murvisboro.
Not good when the public walks in the building.
And let me explain, a week, and this is a TBI, FBI background check, we also do a local background check. Sometimes things come back on the TBI, FBI, which may take two days to get back, especially if something pops up that doesn't come back on the local. We've had that situation, especially with custodians. And TB test, tuberculosis test, that takes two to three days to read. So all that, right now, we can't get anyone in to take the FBI, TBI background check for two to three days unless they want to travel to Franklin or Cheviel to get that test, because right now, we're hiring additional teachers, Russell County's hiring additional teachers, everybody's getting a background check right now.
This is what we had talked about, hoping that we would be able to handle it.
But we're going to advertise, we're going to do, we're going to reach out at all means, free, we're going to ask Channel 3 to help us out with the custodial services, get the word out. We're going to do what we can to recruit.
And add in the DNG and add in the Daily News Journal?
Multiple media outlets.
Right.
Yes, yes.
We need to go, we need to go to multiple medium outlets where people that might be applying for this post are going to see it.
Yes, ma'am.
I think WGNS would be a good outlet, too.
Yes.
Well, I think, I think we can see consensus of this board that we are all very concerned about it. And I think that it's something we need to fix ASAP, you know?
Yes, sir.
As soon as we can in order to get things normal where we would like to have them. And I know sometimes it's hard to get good people and I know things have changed. You know, we didn't have to do FBI checks back a few years ago, but I understand that and I'm grateful for it because we do need to do those things. We just need to, need to get things rolling just as rapidly as we can.
Yes, sir.
Somebody, to me, somebody in that building needs to be supervising custodians.
And we can give you an update in two weeks at our next meeting.
Okay. Ms. Barrett and then Dr. Brown and then Ms. Smith.
So let's be clear, we do have full-time during the day, according to this chart. It's only at night that's the concern right now. So what's expressed mean, I know you got, is that the...
It's agency.
It's agency, okay, that's what I thought, okay. Thanks.
Dr. Brown?
Well, Mr. Ringstaff said update in a couple of weeks. This is important enough, I'd like to have an email once a week just to know how things are going.
Possible?
Will do.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Smith?
I just want to clarify, I think one week is great for the turnaround, to have the thorough FBI, you know, check, background check. I just want to make sure that it is thorough, that we do everything that we can to make sure that the people that are working in the schools are safe for our children.
Yes, ma'am.
And it doesn't matter whether we're looking at male or female, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
No, I'm just going to...
All right. Well, I didn't want anybody to think that we needed...
And we go beyond what is required by law. We do the local background check as well, along with the national background check.
Okay, all right, Ms. Phillips?
My question is sort of a side question that just keeps running around in my head. You talked about the bus drivers working on stripping the floors, is that what you were saying? Was that voluntary on the bus driver's part?
Yes, yes, we asked anybody who wanted to work this summer because they're laid off in the summer.
Right.
And we had some willing to do custodial work and we had others who painted Bradley.
Uh-huh.
So we're just trying to provide them with 12-month employment if we can.
I appreciate them giving it an opportunity, yeah.
All right, any other questions on this topic, concern? Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ringstaff, thanks, Dr. Gilbert. All right, next item.
The next item is your enrollment updates and we put the latest greatest sheet at your desk. I've added some items to this sheet just so you could track it better from month to month and year to year. If you look at the yellow block towards the bottom where it says growth over last year, we are up 344 students over the end of last year. Our current enrollment is the bottom right-hand corner, 8,407 students. Now, that includes all pre-K, it includes all regular ed, special ed, every student in our district is in that number. These came in this afternoon and so we've tracked everything for you. If you look at the middle at the bottom, our pupil teacher ratio right now, K through three is 18.97 to 1, four through six is 21.64, and our average right now is 19.91. The numbers, the original projection that I gave you was 8,419, so we're, you know, really close knocking on that door, we'll be over that number. Right now, it's almost a 4% growth rate over where we finished the year. So we expect some additional growth monies this year under that figure.
Okay, all right, Ms. Phillips?
Just a quick calculation, if that's 20 in a classroom, that's a little over 17 classrooms with that growth, so...
Yes, ma'am.
It's a lot of classrooms.
We have some shifting to do, I want to look at the numbers. I can proceed, making maybe a couple of shifts in here, but it's pretty much what you see. We're still, I still want to look at Reeves, concerned about K3, so we may shift there and then she also needs, what you have on the Reeves is that there is an extra teacher that she's been told to, that we'll have, but it's a matter of where that teacher comes from, so we're looking at, looking at that now.
How can they, in the Reeves Rogers, tell that again, how they could have the 21.25?
Well, you're looking at, there are a couple of things we want to look at. One is the individual classrooms, but if you look at the K3 PTR in the light green, that cannot be 20.5. And so I really think that Lori probably is going to grow, you're only looking at a couple more children to make that 20.5. You're only looking at a couple more children to make that 20.5. And so, we were talking about that this afternoon with her. And I think I'm probably going to add, I did have a conversation with Mr. Rowe at the Housing Authority. We do expect some of our Franklin Heights children shift probably out of Mitchell Nielsen to some of the other schools. So, I'm having to kind of guess where they're going to go. And so, that's why with some of these, the PTR is a little lower probably than it needs to be, but I'm a little antsy about what's going to happen between now and December. And I think that, I think there's no question that Reeves will exceed that 20.5 any day.
What is the, if you don't mind me asking, what is the number that we cannot exceed in the upper grades?
30, right.
Oh, it is 30?
It's 25. 25.49 average, no more than 30 in any one class.
Okay. Because I was going to say, one of these is 24.8 and you know more students are going to come in, so...
Yeah, we're watching some of those. That one may hold and it may drop. I'm not... I'm watching that one. I'm not as concerned about that one as I am with some of the others. What we're doing is looking at history. And also, we have some families that will come in a little later. And so, the principals have included those that they know are going to return that are not here yet and probably won't be here until MTSU starts. So, we did ask them to include those.
Can you remind me again with our expansions, what these building totals could... What the capacities would be?
In which ones? Hobgood?
Yes.
Hobgood will hold another 200 to 225 students.
Okay.
And Hobgood basically is at its capacity right now. And the far column to the right is building total students. That's special ed and pre-K. So, for example, Scales is a 1,000-capacity school. It can go a little above that, but you can see it's filling right back up again. And you can look at overall Creek and it's at 855. So, it's getting up there. And of course, Pittard, I don't know, they keep growing 950 again. They just don't seem to let up. And even Reeves Rogers at 525 in that school. And last year, I believe it was projected at 450 and it continues to grow as well.
Ms. Vaneer?
My concern is also going to be Pittard and Reeves Rogers because the issue with Franklin Heights, I would imagine some of those children will end up in those schools.
I think we're guessing. We're having to guess. I have talked with the principals at Black Fox, Bradley, Hobgood, Reeves. I also talked to Pittard and told them that there's a possibility of their getting additional students. I actually have a list of those students. Most of them are K3. But when... I want to take that list tomorrow. And if we start getting close to the limit, I want to see what the possibilities are. But I have their ages, so we can figure out. Not all of them will come to the city. Some of them will go to the county.
What is that date for Franklin Heights? Is there a date as far as when everyone has to be out of there?
They will have to be out by December. And Mr. Rowe told me that he already thought that 10 of the families... There was a first group that happened right at that they had to be out by the end of May. The second group has to be out by December. He told me that he thought that at least 10 of the families had already moved. But the list that I did get from Housing when we met with them, there were about 80 students on that list. So, I want to see where those students are. And again, we are guaranteed some of the first group went to the county. It's really where they can find places for the vouchers.
Ms. Ed, hold your thought. Give me a minute. Do we have, and maybe I'm not reading right, capacity limits or totals for each school?
They're not on this sheet, but I can get those for you.
Okay. Would you just... Would you send that to me, please? I'd like... I don't... Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Phillips. I didn't...
And Mr. Anderson and I will have to have a conversation about what those capacities look like because you can have... It's unrealistic to say you're going to have 20 in each classroom because we know we have some special ed classrooms and some other classrooms that are used that... So, the numbers really, what they would have looked like 10 years ago and what they look now are very different.
Well, I'm just talking about building capacity.
Right.
Oh, I know. I see. You're going to base that on classrooms?
He's going to base it on classrooms and I'm going to base it on real use.
I understand. And there is a difference in the last thing you said.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, Ms. Phillips. I was afraid I'd lose my thought.
Oh, that's... It happens to me all the time. Listen, this is just my thought regarding the upper grades and the pupil teacher ratios. In my opinion, there is what the law allows. And then there's what is the most optimum teaching, learning environment for the children and the teachers. And I really believe that with the challenges in front of us, we need to do all that we can to keep the pupil teacher ratio below what the law allows.
Well said.
All right, any other questions or comments pertaining to the role? Mr. Barrett?
Just, I pulled up the one from last month or from June, I guess that's the last time we met. And I couldn't believe how much overall, it was what, 250 between when it closed last summer, this past summer, and then when it opened? That's just tremendous growth right there. It's just a shocker.
And all those apartments aren't done being constructed yet?
I live over on that side of town, so I see it.
And all those apartments right next door to Scales? I'm in...
Segal.
I'm in Segal. And already filling those up, aren't they?
They are. And we're getting... We're now getting some students from the apartments that are right across from the avenue, too, where we thought that we would not get many there. We're getting some...
Where are they from?
They're overall.
They're overall?
Mr. Barrett?
I know the school year just opened, but are we under capacity? I mean, obviously, we're under capacity at some of these schools. I know, I think we just had that discussion.
We have some room at Northfield. We have some room at Segal, no, Casin. I just moved a pre-K because Mr. Thompson is adding a kindergarten teacher. So, we just moved on Friday, as a matter of fact, was when he hit his number and I got a little worried. So, we added a kindergarten teacher there and shifted that kindergarten, I mean, pre-K. We added a kindergarten teacher and shifted pre-K over to Northfield. And we are going to have to look at pre-K next year. The ideal would be to be able to have our pre-K and also our pre-K special ed students in schools where they would be attending and it's just not possible with the growth. That's what our goal was to do, but we just can't do it.
What exactly does the change in Franklin Heights? How does that affect our program there and Candy Clifford's program as far as housing?
Okay. We... The pre-K program will be there, we know, throughout this year. We'll move next year.
Throughout the school year?
Yes, uh-huh. Now, they will be doing some building. I actually thought about the possibility of going ahead and moving those, but did not have the space. Greg and I have talked about the... We want our family resource program and our outreach program where the students are going to be and where the families are going to be. So, we're investigating right now where those possibilities are going to be for that. But I think it's critically important. I think the good thing that's happening is what you'll see and what you heard with Greg's program. Remember, that doesn't include ESP. So, what you're finding is we're finding pockets of places to serve. I guess it's the best way that we can put that. For example, Winlon Trailer Park and some other areas where we have not had been able to serve. We also had discussion and will have discussion about how we can use the chow bus as far as basically tutoring on wheels or parent education on wheels that can be used during the day. So, we're talking about all those kinds of things. Had a discussion with Housing today about what might be available in their complexes. Have had a discussion with another mobile home park about the possibility of using their community room. So, we're really interested in what we can do as far as going to parents because it's much easier for us to go to parents than it is for parents to come to us. The good part about Franklin Heights is you had a very concentrated area where parents could easily walk and children could easily walk. So, we're still looking for... We want to see where... Over the next few weeks, we'll be really looking at demographics and seeing is there a spot that would be kind of ideal like Franklin Heights? If not, what can we do with various spots or with using the chow bus? And that's a lot. I know that's a lot, but just know that we are looking at what's the best way to get our parents involved, to get our students involved, to make sure that they have the tutoring after school. So, I know that Karen just wrote a grant for some of our ASL children and we think that we'll get that for tutoring after school. But we really... I think you'll hear us talk more about the summer slide and seeing what we can do to make sure that that doesn't happen. And I think some of the models that we looked at this summer and we used, well, you'll see duplicated like the Boost Camp. But I think that's really important for us to look at what happens after school and what happens during the summer for our students.
Ms. Vaneer, any Ms. Phillips?
A thought just occurred to me. I've driven up Old Nashville Highway. What about that Armory Building? I don't know if it's in use all the time, but that's kind of in the Mitchell Nielsen area. I wonder if that might be a viable option at some point in time?
I think that's used. I thought that was TEMA, Tennessee Emergency Manager, last I knew.
Okay.
It could have changed, but...
Ms. Phillips?
I was just wondering if people in the office, planning office, Mr. Bromley or any of those could help identify possible sites?
I think so. And I think that we have some ideas of what we can do. I think our partnerships are really strong and so knowing where those partners are and knowing what we can do in the apartment complexes or if we can't, then what can we do with the mobile? But the key is to find where our children are and where our parents are and then how do we access? We have some ideas for behind Rowland Acres, for example. We're looking and also we're looking at faith-based partners and can we have meetings with parents there? So, we're really looking at a lot of different areas, but certainly the Planning Commission would be the place we would look and particularly in planning for the future about any shifts that we might be seeing with demographics.
I guess my fear is that somehow in this, we're going to lose the parents. I worry a little bit about that. And with the best will in the world, I know the faith-based partnerships are very strong, but I also worry a little bit that somehow parents might not feel that is as available to them.
Right. And I haven't really developed this yet, but I have talked with a principal and assistant principal about heading up a committee that would look at, instead of looking at the big programs like we have for the parents like the reading nights and the math nights. And I've also talked with Mr. Rowland about this. But trying to target particular segments of the community, so our Hispanic community, our parents who might have children with autism, our special needs children and their parents, our gifted children and their parents. So, I think you'll see us moving in that direction. I have a feeling that we're probably would be... I would like to see what we can do to be effective with those subgroups. So, I think that's going to be a challenge. I don't know whether... I think there are some folks doing this. Nashville, I know the CASA, as a friend, I believe is the way that it's pronounced, has a tremendous outreach to the, really, not just the Hispanic community, but certainly the Hispanic community makes up a large population there. But I'd like to see what we can do with really getting some good information and forming strong partnerships with subgroups of parents.
Thank you.
So, there can be some effective work. And I'm not making any promises and I don't know what will come of that, but we're going to start looking. That's the next piece of the puzzle.
I've heard good things about the CASA.
Right.
Really good things about that.
All right, any other questions, comments, any other business? We meet again on the... I'm sorry, Ms. Vaneer?
No, when we were just talking oh-so-briefly about the new pre-K setup, I think I'd like a report from Mr. Marlin at some point about how that is developing.
Sure.
And then also, as long as he's enlightening us, I'd love to get a report about our special needs population, where people are getting help and just your program, but really the students and what kind of needs they have. I think that would be most helpful. And it doesn't have to be next time, but sometime soon.
That would be great. In fact, Joe and I had actually talked about that. Mr. Camel, I believe, Gary, do you have the update for the growth funds?
Yes, it's the last page of your board packet. And as you know, we received word from the state in January that we would receive $818,000 in growth money. At that time, they gave us half of the money, $409,000. Because we continued to grow during the year, we ended up with $1,509,500 in growth dollars. Wow, big difference. That money, of course, went to pay for all the teachers we had to hire last year because of our tremendous growth. And the state has indicated that it should go into the previous year so it doesn't get carried over into this school year. So, one good thing is we got all that money. Another good thing is it paid for the teachers, but that's it. That's where it went.
Thanks. Okay. We're back here on the 25th. Am I correct? All right, anything else come before this board tonight? Who I hear are motioned to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Anybody in opposition? Good night.